And good morning, everyone. It is 9:30 in the morning. We are here with Clark County Council and Ridgefield City Council in a joint meeting. The timing for this could not be better in that Clark County Council is actively working, of course, on its transportation project now. And much of the content of what I presume that we'll be talking about with Ridgefield indeed deals with transportation. So I just want to give a reminder to those who are here for the Clark County Council portion of this meeting. We'd like to see you back here at 1 o'clock today. And that's when we'll begin the typical council time that we would normally be having at that time. So we'll see you then for that meeting. So meanwhile, I'd like to turn this over to Ridgefield. And if you would give your introductions and take it away. And again, we really appreciate you being over here, let me say, on our turf, because that is a mutual turf, since it is county and Ridgefield is such an important part of our county. So thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I, since we don't, this is unprecedented. We haven't really gotten together before, and I'm hoping we can get together regularly. I think this is a great initiative, and I'd like to get together with each city on a more regular basis to do this. We need to get together more often, and we need to get to know each other personally, especially in person. So thanks for coming. I'm thinking we should just go around and do introductions.
Yes.
If that's okay?
Yes, I was suggesting introductions, and then followed by Ridgefield taking it away with the topic that you'd like to have first covered.
Thank you, Chair Farman. This is Ridgefield Mayor Jennifer Lindsay. I really appreciate that warm welcome. I know that we are excited to be able to be here with all of you today to have this really important conversation. So I would like to have my council introduce themselves, and then the members of our Ridgefield staff that are here as well please introduce themselves, starting with Councillor Chipman.
Such a loud voice. Good morning, I'm Judy Chipman.
Good morning, I'm Clyde Burkle.
Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Mayor Pro Tem Rob Akeley.
Good morning, I'm Councillor Mackel.
My name is Ron Onslow. I'm a councillor for Ridgefield.
Oops, it's off. I'm Lee Wells, councillor from City of Ridgefield, 16 years, lived there since 1954.
Good morning, my name's Steve Stewart. I'm the city manager for Ridgefield.
And I'm Chuck Green, I'm Public Works Director for Ridgefield.
Gary Mevige, Clark County District Four.
Sue Marshall, Clark County Council District Five, proud to represent Ridgefield.
Kristin, you want to speak up?
Hi, I'm Kristin. I'm the Administrative Assistant to the Council.
Hi, I'm Leslie Lopez. I'm the Chief Civil Deputy at the Prosecuting Attorney's Office.
Clean Auto Care Manager, welcome.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Amber Emery, I'm the Deputy County Manager. Thanks for coming.
How about Clark County?
Yeah, maybe I can just shout it out. Councillor Public Works Director for Clark County. Very awkward.
We have some folks I know that are online for health-related reasons. At this point, we seem to be having a little spout of some of this RSV or flu or something that is going around. So that doesn't mean that you are any less of a participant. So if those of you who find yourself in that situation would introduce yourselves too, we'd appreciate that.
Good morning, I'm Michelle Belk, I can't talk this morning, Michelle Belk, Clark County District Two.
Young Clark County Council District One. Sorry, can't be there in person, I'm out of town. I actually really, really wanted to be there in person. It's hard to be in this little box here.
Everybody, Jordan Bogie, Senior Policy Analyst, supporting the County Council.
Thank you, and are there others?
Oliver and...
Good morning, Oliver. Finish up there if you wish with your name and title.
Um, hi there, Phil and Beth, Transportation Plan and Specials.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, I think that's it. I think we've all been introduced.
Okay, thank you. And Kathleen, did we hear from you?
One more, one more, one more we missed.
I'm Steve Oliver, I'm a citizen of Ridgefield.
That does it.
Okay, great. Well, I don't know on the Ridgefield side if you would like to start with the Public Works City Manager, the Mayor. You all can decide that, I am sure, and then take it away, because we want to hear from you today.
Thank you so much, Chair. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to Chuck Green to give a presentation on the I-5 South Connection Project.
Okay, thank you. So again, for the record, I'm Chuck Green, Public Works Director. We do have a little slideshow. What I'm going to do is kind of go slide by slide and pause between them. This is an open invitation for questions and discussion, and so I don't want to go too fast through what we have. There's a lot of information here. But so feel free to jump in during any time you have a question. So Kristin, are you running the PowerPoint? Okay. So what I wanted to do is start with a little bit of background and issues on this project. It's not as recent as you might think, and so there is a history here. Go ahead. This was, it's been around for at least 15 years in discussion. It was added to the county's arterial atlas in 2007. It was a topic of discussion with the 219th interchange as to what to do, whether to go to the west. And there were some considerations in that process to go to the west, which then led to it being added to the arterial atlas in 2007, also the city's transportation capital facilities plan in 2008. In 2019, the city received a wash-up planning grant, and that grant funded the connector study. That's what we're presenting most of, of which today. That study went for two years, concluded in 2021. Also, we have received or have available some planning studies along 179th Corridor. I know the county has spent quite a bit of time on that corridor, not just on plant, long-term planning for the corridor, but also improvement projects, including roundabouts along the corridors. We have some of that modeling that was done in rather a good amount of detail that factor into what we're going to be talking about here. We have provided an ample opportunity for community engagement through the process. We have a forum called Ridgefield Roundtable, and that's where we host these discussions, project pages, and even surveys as we go through different projects, and this was one of them. Believe that only one of you on the County Council now was on council at the time of the Boardtime presentation back in 2020. So this probably a lot of new information to most of you. Ridgefield City Council had a presentation early 2021. We did receive, there were seven alternatives that were generated by the study. We did receive a petition supporting the Purple Alternative, and I'll describe that in a minute, in July of 2023. We did make a request to the state legislature for a $5 million grant this session. It was not funded. That's not going to hold us up. We want to continue making a request to the legislature, because that next step is pretty critical to advance this project. And then, as you know, we're all updating our comprehensive plans and transportation capital facilities plans now, and the city of Ridgefield will be doing ours in 2024. Yes, so any, before I move on, are there any questions?
I was writing, Chuck. I missed that comment. What did you ask, Chuck?
Just like any questions or comments.
Oh, okay, yes. I was writing the history down right here, that's what I was doing. The community was involved through, in 2001 through 2005, through the Ridgefield Junction Neighborhood Association. So there would be minutes of that annually, and we were involved with the state of Washington for the Exit 11 Battleground Highway project. We had numerous meetings with the community, and we were trying to do the 219th extension, and that was through the middle of Rawling Hills. There was a lot of opposition. But then, in them four years that ensued, there was a tentative line drawn in the sand going over to Hillhurst, cutting around off of the 219th over to 229th, I believe it was. And the other thing that was brought up then was with Don Wagner, with the state of Washington, if we would have contested, or let me rephrase that, contested, I guess, the alignment, what was going in, they would have had to have turned around and do another whole new EIS, would have put another year on the project. They had agreed to, when they put the overpass in, that it would accept a road to the west over towards Hillhurst to serve Ridgefield. This road is a pressure relief valve, kind of like your hot water tank that you have in your house. If the water gets too hot, that valve blows off. This pressure relief valve is to eliminate a lot of the traffic on our Exit 14 interchange with all the residents we have in the businesses. It's a valve to the south. And so I guess that's a lot of background, and if anybody has any questions, I've got background on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And so I think Karen Baurman and I were the only two councillors, so I'm looking forward to your update, basically, and where you stand right now. I mean, we all need to work together as a county and city, with public input, of course. Karen, did you wish to say anything? I do believe you were at that council time presentation.
I was, and it's good to know that we are finally having the opportunity to follow up on this in a serious way. We know that COVID was interfering for a while, various interferences, but we're with the program now. And to follow up now on that which is relevant is really key. I think that's going to be the mission, what is still relevant and important to Ridgefield in moving forward.
Okay, I'll move on to the next slide. Thank you, Kristin. So me being a traffic engineer, I geeked out over this stuff, but I've been spending a lot of time geeking out the last couple of weeks getting ready for this. We do have a lot of analysis that's been done. The planning study that you're referencing here was one, there is a substantial amount on the 179th Corridor. There's travel demand forecasting that came out of the Regional Transportation Council. There's actually a rather large amount of traffic simulation modeling, which is basically plug in the traffic numbers and you get this animation that shows how things work. I'll talk a little bit more about that, but the long-term modeling that was done for the 179th Corridor with the improvements in place continued to show backups on the off-ramps from I-5 to 179th Street. And so that's part of the reason or the urgency of this project is because this project, if built, would take a lot of that traffic that's backing up at the 179th interchange and move it north. Future travel demand modeling, RTC is in their transportation plan update process now. The county and the city are moving their future years to 2045, and so a lot of that future year modeling is occurring right now, and we have some of those results. We also have a rather extensive amount of traffic impact analyses have been done for developments in the Pioneer Street, State Route 501 Corridor, and actually throughout the city, that are starting to look at getting into the longer term, a short term and longer term, and identifying some operational issues along Pioneer Street Corridor and at the interchange that are, we believe, are important to factor into the urgency of the South Connector project. So that's, before I move on, any questions, comments?
I have a question, Chuck. On the modeling for 179th, did you take into consideration with that modeling that was done related to all the increased development that has occurred and the amphitheater impacts? Is that accounted for?
There's two parts to that answer. One is, as you know, the urban holding, when it was lifted, there was a question about how much future traffic is going to be released with the lifting of the urban holding. There was also, at that time, discussion about some big developments at the interchange area at 179. So the question was, how comprehensive are we, or what's the compendium of traffic that we're adding based on all of that? And that was the, I believe at that time, because there was some early planning for the interchange itself, there was an extensive amount of consultant involvement. If you look at bullet number two, there were four different consultant teams involved with that longer-term analysis, and that's where we looked at, how many trips are we really planning for? And what happens even if we build the improvements, what happens to the interchange? And that's where that simulation analysis concluded that you're going to still have rather measurable traffic backups on the off-ramps during peak hours. That's the normal peak hour analysis that's done. The other is with the amphitheater and special events at the fairgrounds. That was a separate analysis that was done, I have to ask Mr. Leiter, I believe, was done for the Delphal interchange and the design there, because that looked at trips during, kind of, the people coming into concerts, people leaving events, and what needed to be done with the roundabouts and the number of lanes on 179th Street. As we all experience who live in that area, there's just a measurable amount of traffic trying to get all in on the same time, on the same corridor, and that's not all event traffic, that's local traffic, the people who live west of the interchange on 179th Street.
I had a comment. My name is Rob Akeley. So I'm one of the new residents that live, I moved in in 2015, and I live up by the high school, and there is now like nine neighborhoods up there. I live in Taverner Ridge, we have 360 homes. There's Wishing Wells, it's been there a while, Osprey Point, Cassini View, Kennedy Farms, which keeps expanding, and there's Sanderling Park, and we have another large subdivision going to go in across the street from the Dog Park. The reason I mention this is I quite often take the 179th Street exit, and so I can connect into Hillhurst and shoot right down to my house. So my point of my comment is there's thousands of other residents that live on Hillhurst that do the exact same thing I do. Thank you.
Well, I think the answer was yes, that you have taken into consideration all of these other impacts, and is it, I'm just wondering, is it Delphal that you come down? How do you come down to hook on to 179th and I-5?
When I take the exit, yeah, I come up from the Chevron Street that goes past the Delphal and connects in that way.
Thanks. Can I ask a quick question? When the modeling was done on 179th, and was the zoning for residential the same at that time, or has it changed at all since the urban holding got lifted? Has the density increased in that area, or has it remained the same since the modeling was done?
So that actually was done in response to the lifting of the urban holding, so the underlying zoning is the same as it was when it got lifted.
And we may have RTC get to, I mean, I've been a member of RTC for the last five years too, and RTC participated in the modeling besides the county. I do believe we did make one small change to the zoning that would not impact the modeling necessarily, but that is a good question, whether, once it does start to get built out, perhaps the modeling needs to be updated just to make sure we got it right. But any other comments?
I would just, I believe that change would add additional residential, with the change. Yep.
Let's go to the next slide then. So trying to put all that together, and it's a lot of information, this is a map showing, and this is a map you will not see as part of the South Connector Study, but it does bring in some of those deficiencies that were part of that study. This is also including some of those that have come out of that other modeling that I showed in the previous slide. So going from north to south, we're seeing some substantial congestion along Pioneer. We know that with the Costco and Union Ridge Town Center developments, they are building some system up there to handle that traffic, and they are doing some improvements to the I-5 interchange. But in the long term, as traffic is generally grows, we're going to see that, the backups, especially on the off-ramps, continue to increase over time. Number two and number three, I think are still a work in progress. I asked Mr. Albrecht if there was some modeling that's recently been done, but unfortunately the model was knocked offline when the cyber attack happened, and so this is mostly what I understood was being, was starting to show up along those roads in the rural area between Ridgefield and the Vancouver urban growth area. Four and five are those that I talked about just on the last slide, where we're seeing some short term, before anything happens at the interchange there, which we know is still a few years away, there's still issues. But in the longer term, as this area builds out, and that's not just right at the interchange, it's everybody who uses the interchange, because that's the funnel point, both east and west. Same with Pioneer, we don't have any other alternatives. And so we're seeing that popping up as well.
And with the addition of a connector to I-5, does that then alleviate some of these? I would just like to know how this would alleviate it, or if they all still are problematic in terms of backups?
No, it's a rather substantial alleviation in this case, because those trips that are backing up, both at Pioneer and 179th, all want to head west. And that's the connector, that it will take that, the trips that want to head west, it'll move them to that new connection. And those trips wanting to go west, as we heard from Mayor Pro Tem Akeley, are not all just living south of 219th Street. There are people who live in Ridgefield who will use 179th to get away from the Pioneer congestion that we're having. If you also notice on this map, you'll see three interchanges on this study area, and three connections to the east, but we only have two connections to the west. And that's part of why this will alleviate those issues at the other two interchanges.
Mr. Green, could you, when you talk about the deficiencies, could you kind of explain exactly what that means? Because I've heard, like, when, like on Pioneer Street, that could be backing up actually onto I-5. Like, what does that actually look like when we say deficiency?
There's two ways that we measure deficiencies. One is something called concurrency. And when new developments are reviewed, if they, when we approve them, they are approved with the understanding that there's adequate capacity to handle their trips, either now or for projects that are funded to occur within six years. So there's a certain level of service that is used for that concurrency, otherwise developments will be denied. And we've seen some of that. We had that issue with the 179th interchange that resulted in having that rather substantial funding package that was adopted for the interchange in the 179th Corridor. The other is in terms of, I'll call it more of a risk or a safety part, and that's where we see, while the, this level of service indicator might indicate that things are okay, in reality, when you do the traffic simulation modeling, that's more of the detail, you'll see that those ramps will back up. And as they back up toward the interstate mainline, you increase the risk of rear-end collisions, and in this case, you're having 70 mile an hour traffic trying to exit into the back of a traffic queue, and that is a safety issue. Okay, so the next one is taking all of this, we don't just jump in to say, let's do the South Connector and say that's the reason for the project. What we want to do is look at, what's the purpose of this improvement, and what's the need for it? So if you notice in the purpose statement, that this is, it will improve regional mobility and accommodate existing planned population and employment growth in the project area, it doesn't say, build a four-lane arterial directly over to Hillhurst. That's part of the alternatives analysis that we have gone through and will still need to go through. But it's showing that we need something. And the need for that something, we've covered in some of the previous slides, that even with the improvements, the 179th Corridor will continue to see traffic operations and queuing issues at that interchange and at the, even with the improvements that are being done by the city or by developments along the Pioneer Corridor, we will still see congestion and traffic backups at that interchange in the future. Councillor Marshall indicated amphitheater and fairgrounds event traffic will continue to mix with local traffic, and before and after those events, we'll still see extensive traffic impacts that are going on to the I-5 mainline when some of the bigger concerts. My Neighborhood Association, by the way, had a rather lengthy discussion about that in the last meeting, is some of the observations are those queues back up toward the I-205-I-5 junction. So that's how extensive those are. We'll still see, we're starting to see level of service deficiencies. Again, that's a concurrency term on the Northwest 209th and Northwest 31st Avenue corridors. Those in the rural area, but those are connections between the 179th interchange and Ridgefield. And as I mentioned on that map, there's no, there are only two connections to the west. It's Pioneer and it's 179th Street. And we've got, what the analysis is showing, we've got three connections worth of traffic trying to use those two connections. And the same goes, not just with traffic on and off of I-5, but there is, we're starting to see some interaction with Battleground, and there is no direct connection between Ridgefield and Battleground. And so right now, those trips have to use, go up to Pioneer or go down to 179th Street. Any questions on the purpose and need statement? Any questions on the purpose and need statement? Okay, so that being said, let's look at some of the current transportation plans, um, because they show parts or all of that, that connection. Um, the current regional transportation plan through RTC shows that, uh, extension of two nineteenth to the west, um, ends up at Northwest eleventh avenue, which I believe changes to Lambert, um, a couple other names, just changes names a couple of times, but it does go to that Northwest rural collector. Um, even if that connection were to just go to Northwest eleventh, there will need to be improvements to Northwest eleventh to handle that traffic, um, as it works its way back toward Hillhurst. Um, next, uh, the twenty sixteen Clark County Arterial Atlas, that connection is shown kind of as a diagonal, uh, corridor over to, to Hillhurst, um, at the south end of the Ridgefield Urban Growth Area. Uh, you'll notice that that maintains the orientation of the road as it crosses I-five. Um, the road that crosses I-five was purposely designed that way to accommodate this future connection. Um, it, the, the Wash Dot project was only funded for the interchange itself, but there was extensive amount of planning that went into that design, uh, and the environmental studies that, um, were done as part of that. And so that's why you're seeing that, that kind of diagonal connection and, um, that continues with the Arterial Atlas.
Chuck?
Yeah, yes, Counselor.
Just really quickly, when we're talking about need, I'm, I'm curious if there are any like evacuation constraints currently, if this will help with that or if there, whether or not there's a need for that?
That's a great question, um, because there have been some, there has been some, um, evacuation planning done by Cressa, um, not as much from this area, but mostly what happens if you have a seismic event that takes down one or both bridges across the Columbia River. Um, we, uh, actually that issue started coming up within the city of Ridgefield in, in a neighborhood meeting we recently had because of the lack of, um, evacuation routes from an area we call the Donut Hole. And, um, I could see that this serving, um, as another mechanism for evacuation. I also look at, um, where the fire stations are currently located. Um, you know, if there's an emergency that we got the, the, the west, um, the one over by the amphitheater entrance off of one seventy-ninth, that's currently shared by Fire District Six and Clark Colletts Fire Rescue. Um, if they want to get anywhere and there's a flood, for example, on the rural collector system between Ridgefield and, and that area, they'll need to have some way to get in there and I-five would be the way to do it, but they'd have to go all the way up to Pioneer and come back around. And, and the same on the east side of I-five up in Ridgefield is the only fire station serving the entire, um, city of Ridgefield, um, and the entire Clark Colletts district that goes down to one seventy-ninth street. So there is really no direct way, the only way for they, them to get down to this area, um, that they serve, this is southeast, west part of their, um, service area, um, would be to you to go entirely through Ridgefield to get to Hillhurst and then on down. There, there's, there's really no good alternative route for them. I hope that answers your question, Counselor Young.
Good enough. Thank you.
I, I have something on the previous slide, just to make sure that I'm understanding what route you were saying was previously studied. It, could you?
Is the Arterial Atlas one or the?
The one that connect, it's the one that looks like it, no.
Yeah, go, go to the next one. Thank you, Kristen.
Right, uh, that looks like it connects directly, like it was, that was the one that was designed, it was thought to be the plan.
Yeah, and I would say that the, this is, the orientation, keep in mind back in two thousand two, two thousand one, two thousand two, this interchange was being designed, there was no study or anything to the west. And so this was a, kind of a quick GIS-based, um, aerial photograph, photography-based, um, assessment, uh, what we call a really high-level planning assessment of where it would go. Um, but generally the understanding was at that time that if we went due west, there would be some substantial impacts to the, uh, Rolling Hills community that, um, that exists west of the interchange. So this was kind of the planning alignment for that, but it did factor into how that interchange was designed and, and the orientation of.
Right, and so it was eliminating that it's no longer in consideration or?
Oh, uh, we'll get into the alternatives. We have a map that shows those alignments. So you see, this is a concept that fed into those other alternatives.
Um, Mr. Green, I think it's important to point out, maybe you can elaborate on it, as that, uh, cloverleaf that you're talking about there, um, it's my understanding as you enter the, the cloverleaf, like let's say you wanted to head south to Vancouver, that there's an accommodation in the elevation ascent for a future offshoot to Ridgefield. And to me, that kind of shows the importance, uh, consideration back in the day. What year was that cloverleaf built?
Oh, um, I believe that was two thousand one, two thousand two-ish.
Yeah.
I'd like to say it was, oh, two thousand eight was when the, the interchange was built?
Yeah, the interchange, when did?
Interchange, two thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so the original planning for this was two thousand one, two thousand two. There was an, uh, there was something called the interchange justification report and then an environmental assessment that became an environmental impact statement that were done in that two thousand one, two thousand two timeframe.
So as you take that cloverleaf, they, they adjusted the elevations for a future offshoot to Ridgefield?
That was a little after my time on this project, so I'd have to defer to, um, actually the people around that design team are now retired. Um, and Dylan, I don't know if, if maybe we could follow up with that question?
Um, I can't. Yeah. I can't get my. Sorry, it's just like on teams too. I do the same thing. Uh, for the record, Dylan Bass, Wash Dot Southwest Region. Um, you know, as, as Chuck alluded to, a lot of the people that were working on this project have either retired or moved on to other positions. Luckily we still have Dave Bellinger, he was, uh, involved in the, uh, design of this, um, working, you know, part-time in our office. And I had a chance to talk to them about it. Um, the design of the interchange would facilitate a, a west connection. Um, it's not necessarily designed to preclude it or to make it necessarily an easy connection per se. There's still some design elements that would have to be considered as part of the, uh, ultimate design of the, um, of the connection. Um, and from my, my understanding, from my research, the interchange was constructed right around the two thousand eight timeframe.
That's correct. I was mayor of Ridgefield and, uh, was part of the dedication of that bridge. And I've noticed to Mike Sorolla, who was the mayor of Battleground, that here it was a bridge in the Ridgefield Port District and the Ridgefield School District, and we're dedicating a bridge to Battleground. And we had, Ridgefield had to sign off on, to, with Was Dot at the time, and I'm not retired yet. I'm retired, but I'm not retired. And as you well know, anyways, the, they had us sign off on the extension because that was, the bridge was a result of the nickel, uh, vote for statewide for, uh, transportation. And so at that time, they said they couldn't build the bridge and go west with the nickel because there wasn't enough money. And so we had to sign off, the Ridgefield had to sign off on completing or at least designing that to go west. So that, I do remember that, that was two thousand eight, yeah.
Okay, uh, all right, how about the next slide? So, um, this is a, a map from, um, the county in the recent, um, work on the Transportation Improvement Program update. Um, it's just there for informational purposes. Um, as you'll notice, that the county's cap, Transportation Capital Facility Plan, um, even though it's on the Arterial List, the Transportation Plant Capital Facility Plan does not show a project to the west. Um, and so, um, that's, that's something that's a definitely point of discussion, uh, for us as well. So these projects, um, I believe, and Mr. Albrecht can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that the county, um, works on a reasonably funded capital facilities plan. So in other words, um, projects that show up in that twenty-year plan have, um, identified sources to be able to complete them. Um, and I don't know.
For the sixth year.
For the sixth year, okay, for the sixth year.
Yeah.
Any questions on? All right, so, um, this is our current capital facilities plan. It's the same alignment that you saw on the, uh, county's Arteria Atlas map. Um, so I'm going to just pause for a second before we jump into the alternatives that, that we've generated. All right, so let's go to the alternative analysis. Um, next slide is rather wordy, um, excuse me, uh, oh, I missed one. Yes, this is the, the map of the alternatives, um, and it's hard to see the text. Uh, so essentially what we have is, um, we have alternative A, we're calling the pink alternative. Um, unfortunately it doesn't really pop out on, on this map, the pink alternative. Um, that, I believe that's the east-west, um, coming, uh, from the interchange, then make a slight, slight, uh, alignment shift to the north. There's a blue alternative, which, um, I think you'll see variations between pink, blue and orange, um, as they're, um, they all want to head to the same location as it gets toward Hillhurst. But over by Eklund Road or Northwest eleventh avenue, um, they, uh, either go north, south, west or south to avoid, uh, some property impacts. So that's why you see some of those, um, alignments in, in different location, but essentially they'll end up on their termini at the same place, uh, Hillhurst and I-five interchange. Um, there's a yellow alternative that looks, uh, that actually it's hard to see here, but it actually shifts to the southwest and ends up at two nineteenth and Northwest thirty-first Avenue. There's a green alternative that, um, ends up at a little, about a mile north of the, um, yellow alternative on Northwest thirty-first and around two twenty nine, two, uh, excuse me, two twenty-fourth street. Um, there's a red alternative that also goes due west, ends up, um, not too much different than what appears to be the pink alternative, um, also ends up at, um, the south side of the Ridgefield Urban Growth Area at, um, just south of two twenty-ninth and Hillhurst. And then there's the purple alternative, which is quite different than the other options. That one, um, as you get off and head west, it then turns north on Northwest eleventh and then Eklund Road, um, turns into, uh, it ends up at Cardy Road and then it follows Cardy Road to the west, um, as that corridor over to Hillhurst and Hillhurst and Cardy. And that is, alternative does, um, include some improvements to Cardy Road, um, that also are included in the Cardy Road Subarea Plan, but, uh, for the sake of this alternative analysis, uh, for this alternative didn't meet the purpose and need, uh, for the project, it would need to go all the way, including the Cardy Road improvements, um, over to Hillhurst and Cardy Road.
Mr. Green, could you, uh, could you elaborate on the, on the purple alternative and what the origin of that was? It came as, as a result of a petition this last summer?
You wanna, um, that was a, a later alternative and, and I'm, it's a little bit before my time here in Ridgefield. Um, but it was developed because if you look at the other six alternatives, they all go through what is currently zone agricultural, there, there's farmland in there. And so the intent was, um, and it was added at the late end in twenty twenty-one-ish, late twenty twenty, twenty-one-ish, to, uh, reduce the impacts on those, um, what could be considered resource lands and take advantage of existing corridors. Um, the petition that we did receive this summer was to ensure that that's still on the table for this alternatives analysis or to put, put it, make sure it stays on the table for this alternatives analysis. So that's, that's what we received.
Where is the, the urban growth area line?
So for Ridgefield, um, unfortunately, it's, there's a dashed line that goes east-west along two twenty-ninth street, um, and then makes a, have a dogleg to the north, um, as between those two drainage basins along two twenty-nine. And so that's the current urban growth boundary for Ridgefield. It does then go up to Cardy Road and hug Cardy Road, um, to the east. There is still some urban reserve land that's south of that boundary. It's not part of the urban area yet, but it is designated as urban reserve in the county's comprehensive plan.
And that's the crosshatch.
Yeah, there's, it's, it's hard to see on this map, but there's crosshatched. Um, uh, definitely we could try to get a, um, a, a higher resolution map out to everybody, um, just because of, it is tough to see, at least in this room.
So basically though, the majority of what we're, of the alternatives lie outside the urban growth area?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a question. I understood, uh, when I received a tour of the area, and thank you very much for the tour, I appreciate that, uh, that there was a possible additional, uh, route that could come off one of the most, uh, southern developments off of Hillhurst that could kind of swing off that and connect. Was that still something in consideration or could you elaborate on that?
Absolutely, Counselor. So the roadway, I think that you're speaking to is the one that connects to what was the Kennedy Farm and is now the Sandrelling Park subdivision that you saw that, uh, goes from Hillhurst to the east. And the city worked with the developer of that project and you can see it, if you see the crosshatched, uh, you know, see the red dotted line, that southern edge of, uh, the red dotted line just above it and just to the east side of Hillhurst, that is Sandrelling Park. The city worked with the developer to actually put a, a collector-level roadway, uh, at the southern edge of their subdivision, so right on the boundary, on the UGA boundary, but on the city side of it. And then go east along that, go north just a little bit so that they created a crossing that, that had minimal environmental impacts. And then we back down to the southeast corner, almost southeast corner of that subdivision, so about the corner of the red dotted area, that kind of the southeast there, uh, there's a roadway that's connecting to that. And the idea was that there would be a future connection, uh, to the southeast that we could use as one potential, uh, alternative for connecting with two nineteen. So it isn't on the alternatives analysis, uh, it wasn't something that was studied as a standalone alternative, but it is one piece of the puzzle that we look at as, um, adding more access from that area. So is that the one that you're talking about, Counselor?
Yes, that is the one that I'm talking about. So it would be maybe a way to funnel additional traffic through to whatever the ultimate connector is, is that right?
Definitely, yeah. It stubs to the edge of the UGA though, so we knew that this is something that would be a longer-term conversation and be a conversation with the county council as well, obviously.
Okay.
And that was a question I was gonna ask, cause I know, um, the discussions are nascent with each of the cities as to where the urban growth may move or be requested to move. And I'm just wondering if you're able to forecast right now, is, is your movement anticipated to be south, uh, through that area when you start collaborating with the county on incorporation?
So during this round- So during this round of urban growth boundary, you know, the comprehensive plan updates, it is not our expectation that we would be moving to the south. They're resource lands, ag-zoned land, all to the south of the city. So you all know the difficulties associated with de-designating and bringing agriculturally-zoned properties into the urban growth boundaries, so we are not anticipating moving south in the near term. In the long term, there has been 50-year work that's been done by the county, at a county level, there's been 50-year work that's looked at, is it going to move south? That is above our pay grade. I think that is going to be a longer-term conversation about what is the nature of the buffers between communities, what's the nature of agricultural production in our communities, and that is definitely a regional county-led conversation. But for the purposes of the UGA and this comp plan update, we're not anticipating heading south. This would be a rural connection into the urban environment.
Right, just a couple of slides back, you can see the growth boundaries, the city of Vancouver, which is getting very close to touching Ridgefield and Battleground. I understand they may have intentions to be moving to the west, so we'll see how that plays out. But yeah, keeping with our fundamental principles as far as some divisions between the cities that they don't just bleed into each other, we need to keep that in mind with whoever pay grade it is to look at that 50-year plan. I'd like to talk to him.
And certainly, for the purposes of this roadway, it has been anticipated to be a rural collector. It is not one that was anticipated to be an urban-level roadway. Think 72nd. 72nd is a rural connector between urban areas. It functions as a high-volume, high-capacity roadway, but it goes through a rural area. That's the same basic concept that we are looking to, in a really broad brush view. The next steps in design will actually tell us a lot more about the, you know, what type of roadway would be necessary, and how to do it in a respectful manner within the rural environment.
Okay, I'm going to move to the next slide, and it's got a lot of words on it. I don't want to spend detail on these, but this is the early assessment from our former consultant on this project, that, as they were attempting to, which on the next slide you'll see a subjective assessment, but each one of these has some issues, each one of these has some advantages. The question was, and probably what would help to just quickly summarize the slide, if we could go back to the one that has the seven, the map that has the seven alternatives on it. That one, thank you. So this table goes with this map, and what you'll see is some of these alternatives will have some ravine crossings or riparian habitat crossings. If you notice, the pink one, I'll just start with that one, goes to the south end, it does cross one of the ravines that I believe is a, looks like a tributary to G Creek, I believe. The other is another, a smaller tributary to G Creek, but it's the south end of that, where the watershed begins on that one. So that table that you're seeing on the next slide, and I'm not going to go to that one, is kind of the assessment looking at the environmental impacts, also right-of-way impacts and some other environmental, both built and natural environments that were looked at as part of this analysis. There's some discussion about historic properties on that table on that slide. My understanding is those are potentially eligible for the historic register. I don't know if, at this point, if any of them actually have been added to the historic register. So I'm just going to leave that. I don't know if we want to spend, if they have questions, if you've had a chance to look at all of the information, if you go to the next slide, Chris. I don't know if you had a chance to look at all of these, but the assessment goes into the next slide. There's also on the right side is the cost estimate for each of these alternatives. I do want to point out again on the purple alternative that it does include the cost to improve Cardy Road, because again, we're looking at not just the fact that Cardy Road is included in the Cardy Road subarea plan, and those improvements are identified in that subarea plan, but it is trying to do the holistic alternative approach from I-5 interchange to approximately Hillhurst, to form that west connection under the purpose statement. So that's why you'll see two costs split out into a rather higher aggregate cost for that alternative.
Just to follow up on that, so those improvements to Cardy Road are foreseen, but they would not, they would be delayed, or how was, the timing would not coincide with your desire to move forward? I'm not sure why, I mean, it's good to note that there are these additional costs, but they would be occurring regardless?
They would need to be done because they've been identified in our Cardy Road subarea plan. Whether they get done all at once is still a matter of further analysis. And again, if you, I've been at some projects where they do create a staging or a phasing plan for these, because obviously, trying to come up with $100 million all at once to do a project is very unlikely in this area. Maybe in Seattle, you can get something like that, but definitely not in this area. But there are logical stages of that that are triggered by levels of development or levels of congestion and things like that.
Thanks.
I would go to the next slide. This is the subjective analysis. This is done by our consultant, our former consultant, because the grant ended in June of 2021, and so their work ended in June 2021. So in this table, a three is considered good, so that's your level of benefit or level of impact. Going the other way, one is poor. So there's various, you know, there are various measures that went into this subjective analysis. As you can see, the aggregate, some of these, there might be different opinions as to whether it needs, deserves a one or two or a three. We have not had any formal assessment through council on this matrix, they have just been presented it. This is what we would be looking to get into more detail, more discussion, if we can get that next level, that next phase of the project funded through the legislature. So this information takes what was on that previous slide, puts it into subjective analysis, then the costs at the bottom are those costs that you saw before. Again, at this level, we like to stick with cost ranges rather than actual absolute dollar amounts, because we just don't have that level of design detail to be able to give anything more than a range at this point.
So this is, now you're getting into an area I'm interested in. You know, what does your staff think, what does our staff think about this matrix? So what is the ask to the legislature to make sure that next step is happening next?
That would be the next.
Great segue.
Yeah. So we can always come back to this, but I do want to cover the next steps and then get back into this discussion.
I do have maybe a question before that, and that is, I'm looking at the 2016 arterial atlas, and I'm wondering how this line here evolved into your options, or if it didn't at all? Is there one that's close to this?
There is no direct parallel between the arterial atlas proposed alignment and the alternatives, other than it goes from 219th, a little bit to the north, and connects to Hillhurst. So there is a generalized parallel, but as far as any attempt to replicate, the arterial atlas is not part of this. The arterial atlas line was created in 2007 as a broad brush that the county, in conjunction with City of Ridgefield, created to create a potential future alignment at a really broad level, but it was not analyzed, other than just a very cursory analysis to say, how do we go west to it? But, so then, the analysis that did go into the alternatives that you saw, that didn't try to replicate the arterial atlas alignment, it simply tried to figure out what are the best ways to get from that 219th interchange over to Hillhurst to.
Their way to characterize that map is it was notional at the time.
Hundred percent, yeah. Arterial atlas, I mean, that's beyond comp plan, right? That's not even a 20-year look. This is beyond the comprehensive plan 20-year horizon, what might you see? And so you just don't know what the alignments are going to need to look like when you get to that point in time, so you create a really broad brush, and that's what this was.
I get that, but you know, it looks very similar to the pink line.
I mean, ultimately, there's only so many ways to go from east to west, so I think that's why, but it is not purposeful.
Got it.
Okay, let's go to what comes next. And what comes next is today on the left, our funding requests on the right. Right now, the city and the county have been coordinating on the comprehensive plan updates in a variety of ways. Claire Lust, who's our community development director, has been directly coordinating with Oliver and Jenna Kaye on the climate side, and Mike Solis on the capital facility slide. I've been coordinating with Mike myself. What I want, probably what Counselor Mebedji's question is, is on the next slide, would answer that. What's in that ask or request? There's a reason, this is $5 million, and this is what we asked for this session, and did not get funded this time, but we hope next time. This would complete the alternatives analysis. So what you see is the front end of developing alignments for consideration. What we don't see is the detailed analysis and environmental assessments that come out of that alternatives analysis. That would be included in this, as well as preliminary design of the top or a selection of a preferred alternative and a more advanced design of that as part of the more detailed environmental study, which could be environmental assessment, environmental impact statement. It will include SEPA, State Environmental Policy Act, because that's, it's why for any funding source, likely will be NEPA, the national side of things, because one of the triggers of attaching to an interstate highway is something called interchange modification request. That is considered by WashDOT and Federal Highway Administration to be a NEPA action. And so NEPA gets included for that and probably other reasons. But it also includes advance and final design of that preferred alternative permitting and setting up right-of-way plans. It does not include what would take to acquire the right-of-way or for mitigation. That would come out of whatever the scope of this design and future studies becomes. The future requests then would be for acquisitions, mitigation, and then construction of the corridor.
And this is a request that is not only a city legislative request in 2023, and then is also on the priorities for the city council to move forward as part of our legislative agenda in 2024. It's also a regional priority that was identified as part of the Clark County Transportation Alliance Regional Priorities List, so it is on that document. There are two priority projects listed for Ridgefield. One of them is the widening of SR501 Pioneer, and the second one is the design funds associated with the South I-5 access.
So I guess, speaking from like a policymaker to policymaker, what our next steps would be, based on the $5 million ask that we see in front of us, since this is such a large regional project with such implications that are going to have ripple effects across Ridgefield and the county, for the project to be a success, we need to show unification between Ridgefield and Clark County moving forward, since it touches all of our jurisdictions. So we would request the county do a letter of support, the county council do a letter of support of our legislative ask going forward for the 2024 section, so. And it's one of those great ones, that doesn't cost you any money. So we love those. So, maybe just the cost of paper, right? But it's all digital now, so. So as far as the next step regarding this ask, that would be where we are in the process on that. And then going forward, regarding the comp plan updates, we would like to have this project included in your CFP going forward as well, so that it's identified as a project that we can actually move forward on.
That is a most reasonable request for the county's support, and I dare say that we would be happy to do that. Let me ask, where have you found in the legislature, in your working with them, the greatest support for the project at this point?
So, sorry, I think there's, there we go, sorry about that. When we went and spoke to the legislature in 2023, I think a lot of it was introducing the project to our legislators, so we had good support from our 18th Legislative District legislators who had been representatives of that area for a long time, but it was an introduction for the 20th Legislative District Representatives and Senator, two of which are from Centralia area, and then obviously, one of the representatives that's been around a long time, Representative Orecut, is in Kalama, knows our area better than probably the other two. So I think for the 20th, it was an introduction for Representative Orecut, he's been very supportive of it, but again, he's just, he has expressed his interest in seeing coordination and collaboration between the county and City of Ridgefield, understanding that the vast majority of right-of-way and in any alignment would be something that would be going through the county. So I think that that was his interest in that, but he's been very supportive and wants to help us on kind of taking those next steps as well.
Mr. Stark, can you refresh my memory on, oh, Mr. Stark, can you refresh my memory on who helped us with the original, get the original grant for funding for the analysis?
Yeah, our 18th Legislative District Representatives and Senator were extremely helpful in getting us funding for the alternatives analysis, the 2019, the 2019 WashDOT planning grant. We got leadership with, you know, in, that was taken by Senator Ann Rivers, who obviously is still, you know, is still representing the 18th. The two representatives that were there are no longer with us, Larry Hoff and Brandon Vick were there, and they were also extremely supportive in assuring that we got that funding. But again, that was part of the.
Go ahead, finish.
Go ahead. I was just going to say, that was, again, in 2023, the education wasn't just for the 20th Legislative District Representatives who were new to our area, but also, we had two new representatives, the 18th, that we needed to kind of help get up to speed on the project, and the impact not only on the 20th Legislative District, but obviously on the 18th as it connects.
Yes, so two questions real quick. One is kind of, you know, this, I mean, this, the project would obviously benefit both Clark County and Ridgefield, but it's clear that it would be more beneficial to Ridgefield. So in terms of funding, I mean, we all hope in a perfect world that we can grant fund as much as possible, but when it comes down to funding, how are those decisions made? Is that going to be, you know, it's further complicated by the fact that the majority of the project lies outside the Ridgefield urban growth area. How does that process unfold?
Chuck just passed it to me, he's like, you do it. So Ridgefield, up to this point, has certainly been taking the lead in establishing the purpose and need, doing the preliminary alternatives analysis, going to get funding from the legislature. It is a legislative priority, like I said, from the City of Ridgefield, again, for 2024, but also being established as a regional priority on the Clark County Transportation Alliance policy priorities. That said, we know going into this next phase, it would need to be a partnership that we would look at doing an interlocal, some sort of MOU or an interlocal between Clark County and City of Ridgefield, to define the parameters of that analysis. The decision-making on alternatives, to be blunt about it, rests primarily with the county council, because the alignments coming off of the interstate are through county jurisdiction. And our city council has been really clear in understanding that. How it connects with the City of Ridgefield, how the traffic flow and how the connections work and where they come into the City of Ridgefield would be something our city council would need to have decision-making authority over. So that. authority over. So that best is best suited in an interlocal agreement. It's what we've done in the past with other jurisdictions, including the county on everything from the, the climate planning work that's going on for the comp plan. A lot of the work that Mr. Green spoke to from planning side for the comprehensive plan and the capital facilities plans updates. It is probably best suited for at a staff level, being included in the CFP and the comp plan update process with an interlocal that defines the parameters. That's how I would see it. As far as the funding goes for it, that's a longer term, you know, question because if we can get that $5 million from the legislature, it helps better define the alignments that we are looking at. It'll give us a better sense of what the overall cost is going to be for the project. And then it's going to be a question of, all right, how are we going to get this funded? And I think that is going to be a much longer, bigger conversation to figure out options for that, as you obviously know from going through the 179th Street project.
Great. Thank you. That was a good answer. And the second question, which kind of goes along with this, sorry, Gary, just, I'll finish this real quick, but there's going to be some acquisition that needs to take place, obviously. And my question is, you know, you always hope that it ends up being a simple process, but if it gets complicated and eminent domain is involved, I'm assuming that it would be the council or the county at this point that would have to go through that process. Is that correct?
Legally, that is absolutely correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Glenn, I wanted to add to your question because, you know, the regional transportation takes a role in this as well. And, and there is a rural, rural portion of that for grant funding. And key to all of this is staff to staff working really well together. And I know the RTC and Clark County staff work great and we get a lot of grants, but it is very competitive, especially out in the rural side. But the monies that are coming from the federal government that we may have access to are pretty, I, it's never enough, but it's fairly robust coming, you know, surprisingly robust coming into this year's grant rounds. So we all need to work together on this. And I think, you know, the specific ask, yeah, I, you know, you've got a priority, we have a priority. It's not in my district, but, and it's competing with the Canvas slew that I've been trying to push, you know, that was funded by the state and then redirected and we're still trying to get that funding back on the table. But, you know, a letter is easy. The, the Transportation Alliance is concluding, getting endorsements and I suspect that the RTC is going to support that. And again, that's a good focus point for grants. My question is, do you, can you use this $5 million now? I mean, is this a 24, let's get it done in your budget for 24?
Hello, there I am. Yeah, so we, we could have used it this, this year because the last quantitative work on this was back in 2021. So things change. We're going through a comp plan update and that's likely going to result in some changes in, in the area. And so anything, and then just the costs of doing business change over year to year. So obviously, yes, it's, it's timely to get those, those actions done now or, or next year, as soon as we can get that next round of funding for it.
And I think you'd hear that from your staff as well, that with your comp plan update work that you're doing, the CFP work is already underway. So it is very timely to be able to actually have the conversation, get these, whatever those design alignments are that we want to include in a next phase analysis, have those be part of your comp plan process. Because you're doing a lot of work already on the CFP. It has to be delivered by 2025, but the work's going to be done well before then. So 2024 is an important year to be at least moving forward with the next stage of this.
So, and we're yet to talk as a council on that Transportation Alliance document as well. We'll see how that comes out. But, you know, we are in the process of developing our legislative priorities for the county. The list is pretty long right now and we will have to try to get it down. But I certainly hope that Jordan's going to make a note of this to, to add, to talk with the council, council as we get to meet with our legislative delegation. I certainly would be supportive of raising this and putting this on our priority list, at least at this point.
I, I have a couple of thoughts. We had a very long meeting yesterday on climate change and public participation, how that's going to be integrated into our comp plan update, which I'm sure you're all thinking about too. As this project can be even analyzed early on in terms of reducing vehicle miles, which I think maybe it's hard to do when you're building a new road, to talk about reducing vehicle miles traveled. I think you can though, on this project, and that would be very helpful information to have. It would, I think reassure the public as we're going forward, building a lot of new roads. What, what the heck are we doing here? So that would be very helpful. And, you know, it's not a surprise. I'm very concerned about protecting agricultural land. So to the degree this can avoid impacting agricultural land, this area south of your city has some of the best, really in the world, productive soils. And there's a lot of small farmers there still very actively involved in farming. So I'd just say proceed cautiously. It would be ideal if we had some way, some vehicle to mitigate for loss of farmland. I know I mentioned that to you. I don't, I think it may be out there, I'm just sending out a plea, if there's a way to mitigate for loss agricultural land, I think in the long run, it could benefit those who are still in those areas where there's still active farming. So, and I would be supportive of this. I can certainly see the need and a really better understanding where all that traffic is flowing. Maybe that's a follow up you could provide to me. That and the climate change response would be helpful. And, and, you know, I, you know, that 50 year outlook and how we, what our ultimate build out looks like, we have to be thoughtful about that. We have to have a plan for that because without a plan, you know, just looking at it from what's been going on with the agricultural arena, you know, where we stand to lose a lot of why people want to live here. And so that's just my two cents right now. And I would just invite Oliver, Ken, if there's any comments that you would like to make, we have these resources in, or Washdott or the regional transportation. If you all have comments that you would like to add to this discussion, I think now would be a good time.
Thank you. Appreciate you all being here today. Ken Later, Public Works Director for the county. It's good to see your faces sitting in the back by the charger so I could keep my computer going. But a couple of notes, and I, I just want to kind of put things in perspective, but I did have a question first. As far as the timeframe that you guys see for implementation of the project, because we know that corridors like this take 10 to 15 years to develop and get through those initial stages. If you could answer that first then.
So I think I can answer that a little bit. And the, the answer that we give, whether it's councillor or community members, and sorry I'm doing this, is that this is exactly what you said. These types of corridor projects, especially that have a lot of complexity associated with them, these are 10 to 15 year projects, but they, they never get done unless you start them. So you take a step and then you take a next step. And that's what we are saying is like, let's get to that next step because the reality is it'll never get done if we don't take that next step. We know it's a 10 year timeframe, at least. By the time we get it done, that said, I have a councillor just next to me that said yesterday, or tomorrow, is when it would be good to get it done because the need, the needs analysis shows that that need is already building and developing. You see it at 179th. You see the development that's occurring there and the congestion that's going to occur because of that. We see it at Pioneer. We see it in the fastest growing city in the state. We see that need that's already evolving. So we know that there is pressure to get moving on it, but we understand that it's, you know, we're looking at a 10 year timeframe.
Thank you, Steve. And that makes a lot of sense. And I, I agree. I don't think the need is any, any, any of us would question the, the need for this type of connection. I did want to put it in perspective just for our council a little bit to understand the dollars. When we talk about a $50 million project, we, we do have robust and quite a bit of support to get grant funding, but still for the county road fund, by the time this goes to construction, you know, I, I could easily see that's a $20 million chunk for the, for the road fund to support with the rest coming from grants. So that's, I just want to put that in perspective. And it, it's hard for me not to make a plug for, you know, road fund levy and budget and inflation and all of that. But, but these are the kinds of projects that, that we have a great need for, that the county needs to spend money on. But, but we forecast out quite a ways and then don't have the funds. We end up spending our dollars on maintaining and operating our existing infrastructure and it becomes hard to build a large project like this. So that was kind of my main comment. And then I don't know as far as the, the CFP, if Oliver, if you had any other comments you want to add. I did want to ask just in general if the report is available for everyone here that we could get access to. Maybe that's something you can get us information on later, Chuck. I know I've seen it. I wanted to thank Mr. Thalberg for being here today. I know we've met on his petition with the residents out in the area. And let's see if there's anything else I had here. I, I did want to say the, the Cardy Road improvements, it's, it's a bit of a concern for me just because it's, it's basically double the project for us to do that. And I think most of Cardy Road skirts the urban growth area for Ridgefield. So it would be on the county side to, to figure out how to make all of that work at once. The, the new connection to the north as well as improving the east-west connector. So another question there is, are you planning on adjusting the urban growth area for Ridgefield to include Cardy Road?
My understanding is actually that the Cardy Road, that Cardy Road is in the city UGA, that it's on the edge of it. But if you look at, I don't know if we can go back to the map that shows the UGA.
And, and I think we've always understood that boundary, you know, as to our maintenance.
I guess the confusion is it's in the UGA, but it's not annexed.
It's not annexed, yeah.
So, so it's in the urban growth area and, and when Chuck was talking about, yeah, you can see it's in the UGA, but not annexed. That map actually doesn't show, there are, oh gosh, at least 10 properties along Cardy Road that have now annexed. The city council, when they received annexation proposals from residents in that area, put a pause on any annexations at the time because there was no subarea plan to identify how the infrastructure would be provided, the type of development that would occur because it's a very special kind of bucolic area that has a very unique character. So council wanted to make sure that however it did develop, that there were specific code guidelines for making sure that it, as it develops, it maintains a lot of the character that exists currently. So that is the Cardy Road subarea plan that Mr. Green was speaking to and that was completed. The implementing code for that is actually going to be coming to our council first quarter of this next year. And as annexation proposals have come in, they have now been, they're starting to be approved, but they come in, in urban holding. And so that until the infrastructure is available to support that development, then they are not allowed to do the development. And the infrastructure most likely to be necessary to support that development is, are improvements to Cardy Road. So that is now starting to occur. So I guess the, it's not about moving the UGA. For us, it's, the question would be, would we be annexing that area? And that's, our city council has not taken a proactive role in annexations. They have responded to requests from residents who want to annex into the city because we've had adequate area to be able to develop into and the council didn't see the need, and I don't want to speak for them, to be proactive in seeking annexation. However, they have annexed, and you can see it on this map, actually. On the top of the map, there's another unannexed area inside the urban growth area. We call it the plateau. Mr. Green called it the donut hole. We'll talk about that later. It's the plateau. So the plateau, we actually annexed the roadways in that area. And so the city did annex the roadway because you could do a linear annexation. And we did it so we could seek improvements on the roadway in there. So that is something we have done with the city council in the past.
And I appreciate the detail, Steve. I, I guess I was asking more from a question of how we might fund the roadway work with where the boundary actually is established. So, but thank you. And I think, just looking to see if I had, I don't really have any other comments, but if anyone has a question for me while I'm at the mic, I'd take that.
I have one question. How long was Patton Parkway on the books?
I don't actually know the answer to that one, but.
Well, actually I, it was when I was county transportation manager, when it started getting built, that actually right of way was set aside in the 50s. And there was actually going to be a new interchange just north of 78th Street, where there's still some right of way for that, but it, that did not happen. But starting in around 1996 is when the, the funding started coming in to build it. So it took probably seven, it was built in phases. So it was probably seven or eight years. I'll give you another example, which is the Battleground 219th Interchange. The early planning work for that was from the I V North Corridor Study, which was 1998, 1999. That's where I first met Mr. Stewart here, which is along in checkered past of, no. That's when legislator of the 18th District, Tom Milkie, started making sure some money set aside in the state budget for its planning. Then as county commissioner, he made sure that it got included in the nickel package. So it took about 10 years from the early planning stages to the time that there is the ribbon cutting.
The reason for my question was I knew it took over 20 years for Patton Parkway to come to fruition for an east-west corridor in the county. And where I'm coming from is I personally was involved in 2002 requesting this project. So it's been 21 years and it's been kind of just sitting on the table. And now it's come to the point where it's needed for the pressure relief valve. And so, and it is a rural connector, just like Patton Parkway was a rural connector. The Battleground Highway wasn't. It was an existing that was expanded. So that, that's a comment. I'm trying to say it's, it's needed. Thank you.
I, I would have a comment and that is, if you look at the old atlases from the early 30s, 40s, there is a road there. It's, it's on a map to, for there to be something and who knows? But that's how long these things have been, been on, on the books, so called. It's kind of interesting in that the, I'm sure that the real estate agents who have sold land in the rolling hills, just for an example, have not mentioned that, that, that there is a planned road that would go somewhere in that area. But, you know, same has happened in Park, I remember the Patton Parkway because I was in high school and it affected some of the land that my family had owned. So that was very interesting to me, but that was a long time ago.
Did Oliver wish to say something?
Yes, councillors and I too want to welcome city council of Ridgefield. The only comment I wanted to make is that. The only comment I wanted to make is that there are a couple of what I may call issues that we have to be looking at. You already indicated that it's not likely that the city will be looking at expanding the urban growth boundaries out. That is not to say that the need is not there because to plan for this will take a very considerable time. As we usually tell property owners, we put a line on the map knowing that eventually it will happen. But it takes some time. One of the observations that you eloquently allocated, indicated is the fact that the properties to the south is designated as agriculture. That is significant because we have to do everything we, we can to avoid agricultural area of long-term significance. Secondly, we are not at a point yet where we will look at alternatives. That is yet to come. And as part of our planning process, by the time we get to a preferred plan, that will help inform us what type of roadways we are going to need. And as you know, putting it on the arterial atlas doesn't mean funding. So it's going to take, that is the first step, but it's going to take significant amount of planning. I'm happy to see someone from WashDOT as well as RTC. It's going to be a collaborative effort and for county staff also to help you in that process. But it is the preferred plan that will determine the type of roadways to support that preferred plan. We are not there yet. Just want to make that observation. Thank you. Chair Bowerman, are you still with us?
Yes, indeed. And I was just wondering if it is time maybe for some concluding remarks? It's a little bit after 11:00 and some had indicated that they hoped that we would be at about an hour and a half. So are there any such remarks perhaps from Mayor Lindsay or, or others who have spoken quite a bit and given us these, this wonderful sense of history and the next steps to be taken? It's just incredible knowledge that was accumulated here and passed along. So thoughts along that line?
Thank you, Chair. It is really great to see so many different organizations represented today in this conversation because it is not going to be something that just the city can do or just the county can do. So I really appreciate everyone taking the time today to be part of this meeting. And it was very encouraging to hear regarding next steps, that sounds like the county's willingness to do a letter of support for the city's legislative ask. So that was really encouraging to hear. And then looking forward to hear if it's going to be able to be included on your CFP regarding your comp plan. And then as far as, I don't know if we need to do any kind of follow-up meetings. I think that'll probably be more staff to staff. I'm looking to Mr. Stewart. He's nodding his head. So we'll be looking forward to hearing what comes out of those meetings. But this is, I think, been, I hope it's been helpful for all of you. I just really appreciate you guys being willing to take the time today. So thank you.
And I.
So I would just add.
Particularly when it comes to looking at the level of support that we, that is necessary in a huge project like this from so many organizations and entities over such a long time period. And I don't know if sometimes you reflect on who was here 20 years ago when the planning was being done and who will still be in leadership roles in 20 years when the planning is being done. And it, you know, it, it's kind of eye-opening and a little bit disconcerting maybe when we think about those things. But it takes that level of continuity and dedication to bring something like this to reality, as we all know. Other concluding remarks?
So we've highlighted a number of disconnects between bureaucracies and leadership. I mean, leadership, political leadership always wants things to get done now because we do want to get it done during our time on the dais. And it's, when you talk about right-of-ways and corridor planning, what great points. I mean, that's my main objection with the Alliance document. Once again, they're failing to plan for future corridors. I mean, we are 20 years behind in that planning and it takes so long, it's Mount Feasance. So we need this and I want to support it. And I want to hear from staff as to whether or not it is timely to get it into the comp plan planning. I think it, it's on the verge. You know, what documents does it need to be in from, from our engineer's point of view? I think the, right now what's confronting us, that's the immediate need, is the $5 million for the next step to get fidelity on the planning. I mean, I like pink because it's more direct, least invasive and costs the least amount of money. But as Oliver stated, we're not at that point yet. And that's where that $5 million will, will finalize or funnel the process and get all the public input as well. And I encourage you to incorporate as much as you can, both to bring in clarity and plan for the future in the south. So anyway, I, I do want to give you a letter. I want to bring it up with our legislative delegation. I want to put it on the radar screen to see if we can get it done this year and get you the money. So working with our staff. And then I want to hear from our staff as to, well, what do we, do we need to amend our plans? Do we need to get it on our plans right now? Is it, is it time? Because I would support that if, if that's what community planning and public works, our road fund would demand for proper planning. Anyway, those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Talk about supportive. We've got it there. Anything from, from, from Chuck Green or any of the people who were major presenters where you would like to have a, a last word?
No, Chair, I think they've said their part for today. So in the interest of time, so in the interest of time, and I think the city of Ridgefield is, we're, we're good with where we're at right now.
Well, and that, thank you so much. In that event, one of the things that you will hear from the county, Ridgefield, is the letter of support that goes forward because of course you'll be copied on that, but also other background things that we are going to be working on that will support that letter and the concept itself. We, we'd like to have a sense of transparency and sharing with you on this project and I, I'm sure that that is mutual. So with that, I look forward to that continuing relationship. And I hear a voice.
Yes, I was just going to make one last comment.
Yes, Counselor Young.
I never got a chance to say that I'm fully supportive of this. I agree right on with Counselor Medvedje and, and moving forward with this. And I wanted to thank the city of Ridgefield Council, staff and WashDOT and everybody for participating. And, you know, to double back on, on Gary's comments, things happen when we get together and when we work together. And I know this has been something that's been trying to be, attempted to coordinate for a long time, but it, it really took a, a meeting between myself and Mayor Lindsay to just bring it, it was just that last time bringing it up to make it come to fruition. So we should do our very best to collaborate and meet with all of our partners in the community because there's little things like this that are so critical to our entire county that will never get done if those conversations never take place. So I appreciate the coordination and collaboration. I look forward to more of it and with more than just the city of Ridgefield as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And that is a good way on which to conclude and therefore this meeting is adjourned.